...further ado, please help them cope with problems of the past. Realize there is not the need to take their life because if you take your life, it's going to end your life and not give you a future. And I pray now, God, that you bless all teachers across this land and country, all peer-up pros, all certified and classified staff. Bless our leaders, Father God. Bless our board members, our superintendent, everyone in his cabinet, and we're going to continue, Father God, to strive for the advancement of our lives as we impact student achievement from this day forward. This is our prayer in the name of the Father, the Son, and Holy Spirit. We ask in Jesus Christ's most holy and righteous name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. At this time, I ask for an adoption of the agenda. The motion. Ms. Miller, second by Ms. Johnson. Any discussion on the agenda? All right, call in favor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate board members you being here tonight. We have a number of guests and have quite a bit of business on the agenda, so we'll go ahead and get started. The minutes for last month's board meetings have been posted. You've had a chance to review the minutes. Are there any questions or amendments we need to make to those minutes? You'll notice in those minutes, we did satisfy the law that requires reviewing the board code of ethics and the board member conflict prevention policy last month.
Good evening, members.
Good evening.
Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. If there's no objection, I'll ask the board to go allow the places on the consent agenda. Next item of business is our financial report. This is the annual financial report, year-end FY '18. We also have an FY '19, March ending August 31st. First document that we have is the June final FY '18 financial. Ms. Young, do you care to describe this report?
This is our ending our fiscal year, June 30, 2018. We closed approximately two weeks ago, and we have sent all our reports up to Department of Education, and this report shows where we have ended the year for FY '18. We began the fiscal year, July 1, '17, at $9,375,136.97, and we have ended our fiscal year '18 with $12,409,352,095 cents. The report shows that we were up on our revenues. We also, our expenditures were down compared to our budget.
Any questions about that report? The next document is the FY '18, July 1, '17 through June of '18, the detailed report. Any questions about that document?
Board members, this is the end of close. This is the close of the fiscal year detail.
And I have to sign off with a statement on this report, and we've already done that, so this officially closes out our FY '18 books.
I did have not really questions, just discussion items, I guess. There were, I know we, our revenues were up, or at least came in over budget. And I know we finished the year under budget overall. On people support services, improvement of instruction services, and all transportation, we're way over, but we were over budget. Was there anything that you could provide as far as, I know we finished the year, I don't know where we put the security dollars?
$100,000. That's student support services.
Okay, okay.
I can run some more detail to get into specifics, what those are.
It was really just kind of getting ready for the next budget year, you know, to kind of look at what, you know, did we, I know we spent the money for reasons, it's not that we, I don't want to spend the money, it's not that, but we're just, I don't know. Ms. Miller has any questions?
I asked Tracy some questions before.
Okay.
And she was going to get some information, but some of them were one-time expenses, and she does have a projection model that she can prepare for the budget. Thank you.
We'll place that on the consent agenda for the monthly meeting. If you go to the next document, the comparison. Was there another one we need to talk about? Any comments, questions about the comparison report? I want to thank our staff for doing a good job of managing expenses, helping manage a challenging budget. We all know how difficult things have been over the years. Good report for the end of the year. Which document should we go to next?
It's the June-July changes.
This is beginning to do here. So this shows where we're currently at. Any questions about that report? Now you're on the comparison. Shows July '18 versus July '17. And our goal is to be between 10% and 15% of our overall budget fund balance. This puts us right at it. We're right where we want to be with that.
If you look at that chart right there, that'll show you where we've come from in a short amount of time as well. We've gotten to have so much in that account and operating school system, and we didn't give them much. And it wasn't too long ago, we were teetering on, you know, four laps each.
You don't even want to see the ones before them.
But I know, I know. You can look right there in the span of three, four years and see the turnaround, and grand economy has helped us a lot on that, but, you know, we made a lot of decisions before this, and now you're starting to see those decisions pan out when it comes to fund balance. And, you know, we've asked our financial department to do a lot of things, and they have, and we've done some things, and our entire school system has kind of set it up, but, you know, look at that there, that chart. I mean, three years ago, we started the year with $4,700,000. You know, that's teetering on being able to pay the bills, and now we're sitting pretty much where we want to be.
That's a decrease in the middle area a little bit.
That's right, that's right. The thing to me is, okay, we've gotten to kind of where we want to be, so to speak, and now the challenge is staying there. You know, we've tried to add back some things we cut, we feel like we need to get back, and we've got to balance where we're at as far as an ideal place in this fund balance. So that's something I think our challenge going forward is to try to figure out how to pay for things that we need to pay for, and at the same time, get ourselves in that situation again.
Well, and something that I keep in the back of my mind, and I've talked with Tracy about it, and we've called some other systems and talked with them about it, is we receive about $7 million in equalization, and equalization is based on your tax digest and your property rate, they have a formula that they plot, and move us on that index with all 180 school systems, and we could move up or down on that index, and if we move up on it, we have a little less poverty, a little higher tax digest, and we could reduce equalization, which could be potentially millions of dollars. So you've always got to keep that in back of your mind.
Well, and what's, what comes up, and, I mean, I've been here about six years. Six years ago, we weren't worried about making sure we had police officers every school. I'm talking a safety department. Now that's something we're looking at having to bump. Six years ago, you know, our expenses on technology were nothing like they are now. I mean, things change and things, you know, come up that you have not in the past had to spend money on, that you have to count for, you can't see that five years out. So, you know, you've got to kind of be prepared, like you say, for things like that to crop up, for things like, you know, like what you're talking about. So, you know, it's a balancing act, and I think, you know, we've done a good job in our challenges to try to make sure we kind of stay on top of it.
Yes, sir.
What document should we pull up next?
The detailed, um, but July, I see.
There's no questions on that. We'll move to the next one. You'll see there we started, the month, $12,409,352.95, and you have $11,89,296.60. Should we go to the next document, the comparison? That keeps pace. That detail, that last detailed report. We'll have all of that. And board members, if you have any questions, just let me know, and I'll be glad to try to answer the questions that you have later if you see something that you have a question about. The next document, the last one, is these costs. Revenues. August, we're drawing $467,504. The new Nichols Elementary School, we've received our last payment request on that project. Ms. Young, there's correspondence with our architect and principal and maintenance. I've not signed the payment request yet, but we have received it, we're reviewing it. See where we're at with it.
All of our function is left, and all done, gone through.
Any correspondence?
There's no worries, yes. They have some minor things they want to finish up, and then we'll actually pass it through.
We're down to three in a time. Yes, sir. Any questions about the Spots report? All right, next item of business is, it's the board will place that on the consent agenda, if we have a meeting approval. And we'll move on to out-of-state travel. Economics group going to New York City. JROTC going to Jacksonville for it. In October, also going to Stark for it. Competition. Same kindergarten group from Ice Creams going to Jacksonville. High school group, the Drone Group is going to Jacksonville. All right, place that on the consent agenda. Surplus property. We have a number of technology-related items to declare surplus. Dr. New, you want to talk to this item?
Sure. We have 11 computer carts. These are the older style, most of these are, I'm guessing, eight, nine-years-old range. These are not compatible with our newer devices, don't fit in there. These have seen a lot better days. We've offered them at other schools, and no one wants them. We've been collecting them over the summer, so we've got 11 of those. We got a significant amount of AccuScan carts. These are Scantron compatible. You remember the answer sheet used to bubble in? We don't use Scantron in the system anymore, but yeah, there's other tools, so they will be valuable to someone, if not, they will bring a decent price on gun deals at auction. We got 40 sets of the classroom instructional clickers. These are also shooter response systems. They're no longer compatible with our latest operating systems, and they're not being used. And we've got our old, original wireless network access points that have been out of commission for about two and a half years. The time period that one of these already hasn't started, and we'd like to offer those up to someone who may be able to use it, maybe around the district, or someone else who has a ZeroS Network. We also have a request from Sutilla Regional Library. We've got probably 700 older, the square-style 17-inch monitors that we've pulled out over the years, and we've upgraded teacher computers and lab computers, and Sutilla Regional is in need of about 25 to 30 of those, and asking if we'd be willing to donate some of our surplus monitors to them out of the purpose that we've got, we've got plenty of spare seats. Those are the recommendations we have.
We'll place that on the consent agenda for the regular board meeting. PBIS presentation. We have a visitor here, Dr. Banks, introduce our visitor and talk about PBIS.
Say good afternoon to everyone. You know, we've had an initiative that we want to jump on board with since the 15th, 16th school year, which was our baseline year. Going around all the schools, we want to have schools with students that are exemplifying positive behaviors. The 16th, 17th school year, we had nine schools that we trained. Those were all elementary schools and the middle school. Last year, the year 17th, '18, we had two schools that were trained, and they were the Alternative School and George Washington Carver. This year, in addition to 11 schools that have some basic touch of PBIS, we're now training Career Academy and Coffey County High School. And so after, at the conclusion of this year, all 13 schools will have some type of phase in with positive behavior intervention support mechanisms. I will say, moving forward, yesterday I had a great opportunity to go to a rally at the Alternative School. For the first time in 25 years, I got to sit down and watch alternative school kids have an opportunity to be recognized. The behavioral expectations for the Alternative School is be respectful, be responsible, and be in control. Every school has expectations, and every morning on the intercoms, the principal or her designated will go to the intercom and talk about the expectations that they have for their school. These things that I see, they are working, and I want to introduce our school climate specialists for our RISA area, that's Ms. Kathy McKey. We've been working together now for the last three years. I've got to know a lot about her, and she knows a lot about me. But one thing about it, I think in Coffey County, this initiative to me is proving great dividends for our community. And I think that if we get on board and we show fidelity, fidelity to this initiative, I think that good results are going to be the norm for our system. So with good results like that, we're going to minimize negative behaviors, and we're going to maximize student achievement. And when we maximize student achievement, I think we're fulfilling our mission, destination graduation for college career in life. So without further ado, I want to introduce my friend, Ms. Kathy McKey, so she can go into the data and show you the results that we are gaining right here in Coffey County high school system. Thank you, come on, Kathy.
Good evening, how are you? It's good to be with you, so good to be with you, and what a joy it is to work with Dr. Banks and with your schools in Coffey County. We've been together today, working with your schools, several of your schools, with classroom training all day long, so that's another feather in their PBIS bucket. We'll talk about that in just a minute, but I do want to share some, some data with you. Okay, Chan, I'm going.
The down arrow.
Okay, good, thank you. PBIS, each county that has joined on with our occupancy and occupancy RISA and with the Georgia DLE as a part of the PBIS initiative, Dr. Lee signed an agreement, he signs an agreement with that every year that we move forward with that. The county has a PBIS district leadership team. We meet every fall, and we meet every spring, and they have a plan that we follow. That plan has three-year goals and it has one-year goals. But this, this district leadership team is combined with your school leaders, your administrators, your APs, we've got instructional coaches, we've got lots of folks from the county there on this team, and they give us the guidance to move PBIS forward in Coffey County. They look, and they support us with funding, visibility, and the political support of the district. So I want to share some information about that team with you, I mean, that district leadership team plan with you. So we set three-year goals, and these are the goals that we want to achieve and work toward as a district. These are the goals that your district sets. So these are our three-year goals, and we're already seeing a lot of payoff on these goals, and a lot of great things happening there. These are our one-year goals that we set every year, and then in May, I present to your strategic planning team, your county strategic planning team, and we look at the data and we see how we're doing with each one of these goals, and then we look and we see, what goals do we want to set for the next year? So like I said, great things are happening in Coffey County. PBIS works hand-in-hand with your strategic plan, focus area three, people and culture, and the strategic goal to employ the strategies that focus on the development of the whole child. Strategy number two is where we bring in PBIS, we continue to monitor and implement PBIS along with student leadership development, local inter-agency planning team, children in need of services, school wellness committees, and student advocacy plan initiatives. So it goes hand-in-hand with the strategic plan. The big ideas of PBIS, and I want you to understand what it's all about. PBIS stands for Positive Behavior Intervention and Supports. It's a process for teaching our students appropriate behavior and giving them the supports they need to sustain that behavior. It's being proactive and preventative so that major behaviors do not happen. It's being proactive and preventative so that major behaviors do not happen. It's not a curriculum. As we've met and we've worked with each one of these teams, we look at what they've already got going on in their building. They've got lots of good things going on in their building. And then we build a framework of organization around that, to plan lessons to teach the students, to have a discipline flow chart for consistency within the building, to look at acknowledgement for students and staff that are doing things. So it's all about being proactive and preventative. PBIS is really growing in Georgia. About three years ago, we had approximately maybe five hundred schools. Right now, this past spring, we just trained school number one thousand three hundred and sixty-five. So it has really taken off and growing in Georgia. Georgia ranks fifth in the nation for PBIS development and implementation. In our Okefenokee RISA area, we're proud to say that seven of our eight counties are PBIS counties, and I'm very proud to say that Coffey County is my largest county, and you're doing a great job with PBIS. So we're really proud of you. So let's look at some scores. You know all about CCRPI, the College Readiness Index there. And so I've collected some data for the last three years. These schools that you're seeing now, they were in, actually in cohort one, they were trained in two thousand and sixteen. Each school is given a school climate score yearly, so we've seen an increase based on PBIS and the initiatives and the things that they're doing with PBIS in their buildings. We see the score there improved for each one of those schools. And we see it with these elementary schools. Gain of points there. That's always a good thing. And we see it with Coffey Middle School. Now, I want you to know that last year we trained, we just trained freshman campus, so they were in their training year last year. They are moving forward to being in their emerging year this year, and we have Coffey County High School and Wiregrass coming on this year. So their scores will be showing again soon, we know for sure. Very proud of the work that they're doing. We want to talk about our return on our investment because PBIS is a great, is a great program, and it's a great initiative to have, but we want to make sure that we're doing it with fidelity and that we're doing a good job with that. So in FY eighteen for the state of Georgia, discipline referrals were down in schools that implemented PBIS, eighteen percent. Those are the schools that were beginning to think about it, were doing it with installing level. Those schools in Georgia that were doing it with fidelity, they saw office discipline referrals down forty-four percent. And we know that one, as you say, one office discipline referral means thirty to forty-five minutes of lost instructional time for the teacher and for that student. In FY eighteen in the state of Georgia, we saw in-school suspension down twenty-two percent, and those schools that are emerging or operational level, they are operating with fidelity with PBIS, their scores were down thirty-seven percent. The last column is out-of-school suspension rates. They were down twenty-five percent in the state for FY eighteen, those schools with PBIS with fidelity, their scores showed that they were down thirty-four percent. So we are really getting a return on our investment of PBIS in the state of Georgia. Let's talk a little bit about Coffey County. This is your out-of-school suspension rates for Coffey County. When we started the conversation in two thousand and fourteen about PBIS, your out-of-school suspension rate was at, above the state level. You were at seven point four percent for out-of-school suspension with the state level that, rate that year, level being six point six. Look how it's dropped since PBIS implementation in the last two years. I don't have the data for FY eighteen. That will be coming out probably next month, but we are now under the state level guys at five point five percent for out-of-school suspension rates in Coffey County. So kudos to all the hard work and the proactive and preventative things your schools have in place with PBIS to prevent out-of-school suspension. So these, these are the out-of-school suspension rates and the OSS, ISS and OS rates for your schools. This information comes from georgianights.com. And you can see, the yellow is the ISS, so you can see from sixteen to seventeen how we have dropped in ISS incidents. And then the pink shows you the OSS incidents at each one of the schools. So we've seen drops there. Here we go for Nichols, Satilla, West Green, and Westside. We've seen major drops in in-school suspension as well as out-of-school suspension rates. Here we are for Coffey County Middle School. Coffey County Middle School came on in seventeen with PBIS, so we've got some drops there, and we, I've highlighted here for freshman campus and Coffey County High School and the Career Center. They're in green because they are just now coming on, and so we'll really be comparing their data as we grow. Coffey County High School and Wiregrass in two years, and then freshman campus at the end of this next year. Your schools are doing a very good job, very good job. The goal of PBIS is to make schools more effective learning environments. We want to make sure that we have consistency. We want to make sure that we have positive things going on, positive student activities, positive participation. So these are some things that we have in our training, and these are things that your schools have implemented. Each school has expectations and rules. They have student and staff acknowledgement systems. They have discipline flow charts. They have scheduled monthly team meetings with action plans that guide the team meetings, guide the work of PBIS in the school. You have, each school has a school team. Each school team has a school coach, and that person is the liaison with Dr. Banks and I as to how we need to support that school and what, what we can do to help them. We've seen major positive staff participation in PBIS. PBIS requires fidelity checks and evaluation, and we do that through surveys, with staff surveys to get their input, as well as inventory, fidelity inventory checks that the PBIS team in each school conducts. Like I said, today we had some PBIS training. Today we have PBIS in the classroom training. So we've taken it from a school-wide approach to taking PBIS to the classroom, and your school district has asked for this for, for about a year and a half, and so we were able to offer that today, and we had forty-five folks there at the training today with a good turnout there and good training. We have Dr. Banks, and participates in the district coordinator consortia. We're excited to have Ms. Aubrey Rossengal to help him this year with the PBIS. She's already doing some great things there. Okefenokee RISA is able to offer you now, we had, each RISA received funding from the DOE, I mean, from the legislature last year, to provide mental health trainings for our districts, and we're excited to be able to offer those mental health trainings to your schools. And at your district level, the school level that's coming up, and we're excited about that. And also tier, tier two PBIS training will be offered this year as well. So we have school-wide tier one PBIS training pervasive in your schools. Now we're ready to go to tier two, and this is helping those students that need a little bit more support there. This is where we're coming in with some of the mental health training, and school nurses will be involved at this point. Things that we can do to support the safety and the progress of our students in the school. Lots of good things going on here. And lots of good things going on in Coffey County. As each year, Dr. Banks and I do two PBIS walkthroughs with the schools. And this is my favorite day of the year, is when we get to do this. He thinks I talk too much and go kind of slow, but I really find out all the good things that are going on in your buildings, okay? And they are just great. Here's just a few of the things they're doing. Your schools and your faculties are working really hard. Your students are responding very positively to these. Also wanted to highlight and give some shout-outs, as you see here is Rockston, Indian Creek, Eastside, and Ambrose with their slogans here with their expectations and some of their rules that they've posted. This is pervasive throughout their school. This is what guides discipline and the process of being proactive with discipline in their school systems, I mean, in their schools. Here we have Satilla. We have West Green, and I wanted to highlight this one from Nichols. They do a fantastic job, all your schools do. But when Dr. Banks went over at Nichols this past spring, they were so excited about their new building and, and they were doing, it was just lovely, and they were doing lots of things, and this is where their PBIS coach keeps a data room. And every month they're looking, they use SWISS, which stands for Schoolwide Information Systems, and that is the software we use to track discipline data. And this particular picture shows the data that they've broken down there for students and how to best help students in their building with the issues that they might be handling there. They do a great job. Here we have freshman campus and middle school as well. Freshman campus came on this year. They've got their signage up and working, and they're doing a great job. They participated today in our classroom training, so they are really on the ball with a strong team and working hard. Your schools are doing a great job. And when we think about PBIS, Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports, and I know destination graduation is your goal for Coffey County. As I thought about this, I thought, well, for Coffey County, PBIS really stands for Positive Behavior Inspires Success in Your Students. And thank you for your time, and thank you for allowing me to come and work in your wonderful schools and with your school system.
We'll next, any questions for Chan?
I don't have any questions, but I love to hear all the positive things about our school, and we write it on there. We appreciate that, very much. You're very welcome.
I do have a question. On the, the mental health services, are the mental health training
Yes.
services that are going to be offered, do you, are we working with them now already, or is that something that's scheduled for the future?
We're going to be scheduling that soon. Our director, Dr. Greg Jacobs at RISA, has met with Board of Control, the superintendents to give them the information about it. And so each county will have a point person, and they will then contact me about what the county would like for trainings, and I'll be the facilitator and set that up. We're working with the National Association Mental Health Institute, so they will actually, those folks will come and do the trainings for us. I try to really go out and, and have the trainees to come to Coffey County, so you don't have to drive to RISA, but sometimes we can't help that. But so we're meeting next week to start finalizing and, and looking at the offerings that we have for you all.
I will add to that, that in relation to that, that Dr. Vanna Bickers called the first meeting of the Coffey County Attendance Protocol School Climate Meeting earlier this week, and they had Judge Gillis, who was attending that meeting, as well as other folks who are involved with Department of Judicial Justice and judicial system, as well as school officials and such. And part of their task is to also monitor PBIS as part of the new law that was put into place this past summer for, for judicial system and DJJ and get involved with helping to improve school climate, so in that area we're working also. And then April Thomason's group, the, she has a group consortium of folks who work with Behavioral Health Unison, DFAX, DJJ, and other like organizations that meet here monthly, and they coordinate efforts in that regard. So a lot of activity going on related to PBIS and that work, so it's all about the whole child. Thank you, Kat. I do want to say that we are fortunate to be in Okefenokee RISA. With the other systems that are RISA, we are recognized across the state as, as a RISA to watch. I know a couple of years ago, they said the State Department wanted to find out what we're doing down here because our systems in our RISA are really high performance compared to a lot of other districts in the state. And I think it's because of y'all's coordination and leadership over recent, and you've done a great job, and we appreciate your support. And I will say that Dr. Jacobs, the RISA director, and grad rates were released last week. He sent out an email to us and said that every system in our RISA is above the state average in graduation rates, so that, that says a lot about the work in RISA, so thank you.
Let me say this real quick. This is not, not a negative, but it's something that I want us to obviously be aware of. PBIS stuff we've been doing, I think is phenomenal. I think it's something that's, that's, I guess they lack in our school. I like some of the stuff that she's put up there on board. You know, a lot of times, this, this may be the first time these kids have had any positive reinforcement or anything like that, so I agree wholeheartedly with what we've done. What, what I do caution about, and that, and this is what I'm getting at, we start talking about the school climate ratings and CCRPI scores. I like those for some things, but that can tell you a lot of information, but I think sometimes we get too hung up on those. And when we try to quantify what PBIS is doing, I don't want us to get too involved in, oh, our, our school climate rating, or how many stars we got, or something like that, because what we end up doing is we get away from what we're really intent on doing here. And sometimes you'll get our teachers or administrator going, well, you know what, that's not right. Just get it up, because we're trying to get our, our score here or our points here, and that's not what this is about.
That's right.
We want the kids not get written up, wrote up because he's doing better, not because we're trying to meet a, a, a star number or something like that. That's the only thing that I would caution about is, you know, instead of looking at, you know, hey, we're trying to quantify what we're doing. It's a good program. It, it's going to have positive benefits. You know, don't get called up in trying to meet a certain CCRPI score, or star rating, or climate rating, or what have you. Because it is, like you said, about the whole kid, not about a score.
We've had those conversations with the principals to, to write them up, charge them up, whatever we need to do.
That's what I'm saying. Let's make sure that they're, they're doing better because, you know, this is working, not because we're just, well, you know, we're trying to meet our twenty-one or our nineteen, you know. Don't get called up, and that's, that's, that's just a caution, not a negative, you know, because I do believe in the program.
Well, I do think that that is good, and they need, the teachers or whoever need to be aware that we're trying to reach a goal. Because I remember in the day, the principal would keep a list of how many you'd send to the office, and then at the end of the year, they would talk with them and try to work with them to get it better, and then sometime, they're just, well, I'm just sending them to the office. You didn't bring them some paper or something like that. So this is a good idea to work with them so that they will look out for that and don't just send them either, you know. We don't want them not to send them if they need help. Then sometime they can work with them in the classroom and they don't have to send them. So, you know.
And that's why I agree with that. I think that's part of the PBIS is to work with that.
You know, work with them and, and whether they say, well, I'm going to work with them because I don't want to lose a star. If they can work with a kid and don't, and, and look at it not losing a star, then work with them. Use that as a goal.
That's what I'm saying. We need to make sure we're, we're looking at the child, not, not in the ranks.
We're going to get all the rest of the kids in that classroom.
That's true. That's true. But then sometimes.
They're disturbing us all the time.
And, and I, I hear them sort of giving training to the teachers, because sometimes they say, you have to know where that child is coming from. You don't lose, you don't, you know, he and I are different, you know, not all they color. But in the way we were raised and things that, I know a kid one time, and sometimes saying, well, you're going to have to do this. No, no, I'm not. Well, you would take it as saying you're talking back. To me, they're just expressing themselves. No, I'm not. I don't, I don't want to do that. So we have to learn, that's why I said, we need to have a class of race relations as well, so, so we can understand these kids and understand the parents, but that's a good program. And, and I think it has done well, and it's going to do better, but yes, sometime you need to be aware, but if I send them to the office, we might get a star taken from them. They'd have to give them a chance to, sometime you don't know a kid.
I agree. We need to help those kids. We need to forget we're going to have to.
Oh, no, 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 no. Right, right.
We want to have the most disciplined students in the state of Georgia. I think it's our goal, and that self-discipline. Sometimes we keep seeing one getting away with stuff.
You know, I.
You're not careful.
Well, I like what you said, the, the training, the teachers, a lot of times that's what's needed. They need to be trained. How do I handle this? You know, so, and it's not, and I'm forgetting about you, but at this moment, you got to pick your battles.
That's all, that's all the point I was making. They need to be written up, right? But the point of this program is to get that number less and less that need to.
Right.
I think the point of it is that organically that number will be lower because we're doing the positive behavior. That number will naturally come down, but, but when we, we do have to pin it down, that it's, that, that we're not doing it because, it's not, it's not not being done because we don't, we're worried about ranking. And I think we've all said that up here, CCRPI, climate ratings, everything else, it's, it's. It's, we don't want our teachers to not teach.
Right.
And have a ranking be the reason they're not doing it.
There's a lot of good stuff you can pull out of CCRPI, but it's not in the hall. I mean, there's a lot of other things that go into things than just that score.
I agree.
Anyway, that's all.
All right. Are there any other comments, questions? Thank y'all for the presentation, Dr. Banks, Kat. Good presentation. Policies, we have had on the table for the last 30 days, the graduation policy, the scripter code IHF. And you can scroll down and you will see the changes that we're asking the board to approve tonight. We reviewed this policy with a team of secondary educators, including instructional staff, administration. And the way we arrived at this policy change is, if you scroll down to the parts that's highlighted, post-secondary graduation opportunity. We did have Senate Bill 2 there, but we sent this to Marveen with GSBA who works with Harvard and Harvard's office to review it. And she suggested we take SB 2, Senate Bill 2, out of there. And we replace Senate Bill 2 with post-secondary graduation opportunity. Because that's what this is described as in Senate Bill 2. Senate Bill 2 passed the legislative session last year and was signed by the governor to allow school systems to award two English Language Arts credits, two mathematics credits, two science credits, two social studies credits. And then if the student completes two technical college system certificates or a technical college system diploma or associate's degree, and they get their one health and PE credit, then we can award them a diploma. So it allows a student basically to go through ninth and 10th grade, taking the academics that would be typical in ninth and 10th grade. And then if they complete an associate's degree or they complete two technical college certificate programs, we can award them a diploma. Senate Bill 2 allows us to do that. But as I talked with, just started with Pam Smith, who's working with our Wiregrass Regional College and Career Academy. And we were talking about how we can award diplomas using Senate Bill 2. And when we pulled up our graduation policy, it was quite evident we didn't have anything alluding to Senate Bill 2 in our graduation policy. So that is how we pursue amending our graduation policy to reflect what the law allows us to do. With the passage of Senate Bill 2, we can award diplomas like this. Pam, do you want to touch on that with any scenarios that might give the board some background?
The focus, I think, of Senate Bill 2 is to be able to get students credentialed to go to work. The students that are not USG college bound, we're in need of employees in our system, in our county, as well as throughout the state. And an example would be with our welding lab that we have in Wiregrass Regional College and Career Academy. We can put, a student can complete ninth and 10th grade, the two TCCs of welding, which in addition to that will be also be an English and a math credit from the technical college. And then they are ready to graduate with credentials to become a welder.
And receive a diploma from Coffey County School System. The same thing would apply at the high school. If you had a student who completed ninth and 10th grade, ninth at Ms. Morris's school and then tenth at Coffey High School, and then they pursued an associate's degree path or a pathway through the technical college system, a diploma could be awarded if they successfully completed that. We just didn't have this reflected in policy. And I felt like, and we felt like, it needed to be reflected in our local policy if we're going to award those diplomas. So that's the change we're asking the board to make. In that conversation, you'll see the part up above the chart. Chan, if you'll scroll up to the chart above, you'll see there was a line there where we had a lot of discussion with our counselors who were in the room and academic instructional leaders were in the room. And they talked about that that line was somewhat confusing because there are some courses that they can, that particular course number can be reflected twice on a transcript, is that correct?
Correct.
So we felt like striking that line to clarify our policy, bring our policy more in line with what we're actually doing. So those were the changes to graduation policy we're asking the board to approve tonight. Now, we'll say that as we reviewed this policy with our staff, and we conducted this meeting at Coffey High in Dr. Cummings' conference room, like I said, about 12, 13 people. We realized that if you look up and down at underneath the addition of the parts, Chan, if you'll scroll down, the part about that we've added, there's a paragraph underneath there that says course credit. And I'm not asking for a change on this tonight, but I'll probably be coming back to y'all. But the paragraph that says Senate, there's a number one beside it. It says SBOE Rule 160-4-248. It says that another rules detailing high school graduation requirements requires high school staff for a minimum of 150 clock hours, 135 hours of instruction and improved block schedule or a minimum of 120 clock hours of instruction for summer school. As we talked through that, and I did research in some other systems, that paragraph has been omitted in some other systems. Putnam County completely took that section out. They are a charter system also. And Fulton County, the way they amended the policy, they added a statement at the beginning of the grad policy that says that because they are a charter system, Fulton is a charter, because they are a charter system, they're going to give the superintendent authority to waive the highlighted sections of this policy. And they highlighted in their grad rule that particular paragraph to allow waiving of that paragraph. Because, for example, at Career Academy, we have students who are doing blended learning, computer-based learning and virtual learning. And also even at Coffey High, we have scenarios where if we go eight, three days in semester one and we go, what, 80, or how many sema, how many days, 87 or whatever days in the next semester, they're not actually getting what that says they would get. So we all know that that's the case sometimes. So really, this paragraph is somewhat antiquated with what schools are currently doing. So I'm not asking the board to approve that change. Not that I thought it was worth discussing while we're off here. So then if I come back next month, you'll have a preview of what we might discuss. Also, the months when we amended our calendar back when the recession was in and we amended our calendar, reduced days, we were not reaching that number of hours that it says you reach. So we won't ask for any action on that not, I will not come back next month and bring that to y'all, unless you would vote into something tonight. All right. Well, we will ask the board if it's okay to place this amended graduation policy on the consent agenda for approval. Principals, does that, was everything I said in line with what we discussed?
Yes, sir.
All right. All right. Thank you. School safety. As part of recent legislation that moved through the legislative process last spring and was signed into law for this school year, House Bill 763, we formed a district safety team made up of cabinet-level positions here at the board office and director-level positions at the board office. And we developed a district safety plan. This plan guides our work at the district office for managing school safety and outlines communication processes involving school safety for the school district. I wanted to present this to the board tonight as information. I'm not asking for any action on this. It's an administrative plan that we use to guide the work in the district. Could be updated as needed. But this is our safety plan for the Coffey County School District. It does not encompass the school-level safety plans. Those will be managed at the school level and then they are sent to Dr. Banks, who sends those to GEMA and works with GEMA and local law enforcement to approve the school-level safety plans. And they are much more detailed than this. But this provides a general set of guidance for the district level in regards to school safety and district safety. Are there any questions about this? And this satisfies the requirement of HP 763 that we have a district safety plan. If there's no questions about the district safety plan, we'll say that we have been meeting with the staffs, the faculty in each school and reviewing our strategies for prevention of incidents and communication and response. So we are reviewing those things with our staffs this month and next month in faculty meetings. I think I've been to a couple of your schools to talk about safety and prevention and communication and response. If there's no questions, then we will move to audience participation. All right. Well, I'm going to save my audience participation for the regular meeting. So at this point, I would ask the board if we move to an executive session to discuss the employment compensation, hiring, disciplinary action, dismissal or period evaluation for rating of a public officer or employee. And also to discuss school safety plans for personnel pursuant to policies related to weapons in school.
Need a motion to executive session?
Motion to executive session.
Motion, Ms. Miller, to second. Continue discussion.
All in favor?
I need a motion to exit the executive session. Second, any discussion?
All in favor?
We have exited the executive session. And I am adjourned.